Good afternoon. We are here for the regular work session, meeting of the Nitron County Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. It's 1:32 PM. For our first appointment, we have our county attorney Heather Duncan Malone to discuss City of Casper property swap.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So, we previously provided you with kind of a packet with some overhead and then on the ground photos of the parcels that had been proposed by the City of Casper as part of the land swap for the mountain properties. There were a couple of parcels identified in a memo I provided previously that we had some issues with. One of those was the property on Exhibit D. It's the North Burlington Block 9, lots 11 and 12 parcel. Which in the packet, maybe I could scroll and tell you what page that is here real quick. Is it on B? D as in dog. Or Delta. It is, I'm trying to find it here. So, it's gonna be. Just a sec here, sorry. I'm not sure which page. They're not numbered. Oh, 39. Sorry. It is East H Street. H. 0400. Yes, sir. Yep. Okay. So, this is actually, the Iris Clubhouse is operating on this, on this property. And I was able to find out that this had been deeded. This originally was owned by the Medical Center. It was deeded to the county in 2008 and then in 2020, as part of, I think, the discussion about banner purchasing the assets of the Medical Center. The county then did pass a resolution and execute a quitclaim deed for this property to the Iris Clubhouse. The deed, however, was never recorded. So, it's going to be recorded soon, but basically, this is not gonna be owned, but this isn't owned by the county. The deed just has to be recorded. This, this particular parcel should be withdrawn from the proposed swap.
So, this is, this is the Iris?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Very good. Have you had an opportunity to discuss this with your counterpart over at the city at this point or not?
Yes.
Okay. So, well, it is what it is if it's no longer in, owned by the county and there's a resolution. All right. Thank you.
And then, one of the other parcels that we had identified an issue with, that I put on the memo is, it's in Exhibit C. And the parcel number ends in 0600. This is Stark's Acre. I'll try to find you a page number here going back up. Yes, sir. It is. Yep, starting on page 14. So, this used to be a part of Alcoa Road, which was, I think, a public road, part of a platted subdivision. Over the years, the county has vacated portions of it. There are some deeds back and forth between the owner of this parcel, Mr. Whitaker, and the county. And it appears that this may still be owned by the county, but Mr. Whitaker, I think, has built a fence, has fenced it in, I think, under the mistaken idea that he was the owner of the property. But Lori in, in planning kind of identified that there were some issues here that this may or may not belong to the county, may or may not have been part of the, the road vacation process. So, it's a little unclear as to the status of this particular parcel.
So, I'm real familiar with this, with this area, but is this something that we need to go into negotiations with Mr. Whitaker on this? Or, or because of where the easement is for the road for 220? Or, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it so it's, so we're clear on what we need to do and how we need to do it to make sure that it's clean.
So, this one, I think, I don't know.
Because that's right there on the corner of Squaw Creek and CY. So, and that's the other, the reason why I ask that is because the other easement fences are just about right in line with where that one is. So, it, to me, it would make more sense for us to, to work with Mr. Whitaker on that instead of the city.
I, I think, I think it probably would. I guess we would, you know, I'd like to, with your permission, maybe do a little more title work and, and try to figure out exactly what the status of this portion is. At least from the records that Lori was able to pull, it looks like we do still own it. But I, I don't know, you know, I don't know that it's of any particular use to us or to the city when it's fenced in and, and has been part of his property for.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I, I think there are a couple ways of going. First, though, I think it is important for you to get to the bottom of the legal title, any written or oral agreements, resolutions, just so we know where we stand. And if, if there's any, if there are any issues. Certainly, it's not, one can't adversely possess land from the government. He has put a fence on, on the property. One option would be to essentially quitclaim the interest to the city as part of the swap and say, you know, as is where is, subject to any encroachments or other claims of ownership of third parties. In this case, it seems like, I guess what I'm thinking is the better course of action would be to withdraw this one and try to work it out with Mr. Whitaker.
Yeah, that's.
I think those are good ideas for both of them.
Okay.
And so, those are the two that we, we identified issues with. There, there may be others. But so far, those are the only two parcels that we, we have, you know, discovered that there's some issues with. I think I told you previously, Road and Bridge and Parks really didn't have any concerns other than, you know, with the tower parcel on the mountain. If the city does end up retaining that, we would, we would like to get a, an easement for a trail that's up there that is used as part of the trail system for the Parks Department.
And we talked about the sheriff and the emergency services having a future right to put on an antenna on one or more of those towers in the event that we deem it in the public's interest.
Right, correct. With respect to planning, I, I still haven't got, heard anything back. I did touch base with Mr. Gustafson this morning and he was still going through them. So, I don't have a really a report from, from them as of yet. I guess, you know, my question is, you know, with what information we have, do you want us to start going forward with having additional title work on these parcels? Withdrawing the two that we've identified already as being issues? How, how would you like us to proceed with, with the remaining parcels?
Well, I know the city and the county are gonna need a memorandum of agreement at some point. And my understanding was that you and Mr. Nelson and, and Mr. Napier and I are all aware that that's needed. And I'm not sure the status on that. Has, have you seen any drafts yet on that?
I have not, no. Not as of yet.
We have an idea on the, the parcel in, in the Mills-Fort Casper area that is basically the river channel plus a little bit. And the city was going to survey and start the subdivision process, I believe, for that. So, that's, that's one you could follow up on at some point. There's one out by Robertson Road.
Before you move in, I got a question on this because we're, since you, since you brought it up. So, we're talking, is the city talking about subdividing this section right down the middle of the river then for adjacent to Mills?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Because I know we had talked about that last fall, but I just wasn't sure if that was still what the case was.
Yeah.
Was at this point in time. So, that, that is where we're going with that is actually.
Yeah. And so, from the center line south, in that parcel, that would be conveyed as part of the swap. From the center line north, that would be held pending further discussions with the City of Mills on, on a couple of different issues.
Okay.
So, there's a strip along, or near Robertson Road along the North Flat River. I was wondering about access on that, but I think, I, I think, let me see, is this it? There are actually a couple over there in that area. But this is it. So, it's Mountain View. Parcel is 0100. I believe it's on about page 21 of our packet. And it is, I think, part of Exhibit C. The pin. It's like four with a bunch of zeros and then 100. Yeah. Yeah. So, again, that should be roughly page 21 in our packet. There is an existing sidewalk there. One question I had, and this is probably a question for Mike Hagler. There's some portion of Robertson Road that I believe the county still maintains, even though, and I don't know, I don't think it's right there.
I don't think there is anymore. Mills Incorporated, everything down, right below the subdivision. And then, from that point, if, if they do, it's that, it's up in this area because the estates down there are all in the City of Casper. Now, and I know everything in here, all these areas on the west side of Robertson Road were all incorporated into the city last year.
Okay. So, Heather, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Chairman, Heather, or everybody. So, when they've incorporated in the past, they've incorporated half the freaking road and left us the other half. On any of these where we butt up against a road like this, make sure we're not responsible for that up to that center line. Make sure we're, we're clear of that so that we don't have any ownership of that roadway at all. And then, moving forward, if they incorporate any more properties, they incorporate the whole road, not half the road. Because taking the only half is, is not right.
Yeah. So, the, for the annexation, if you'll check with Mike Hagler, Heather.
Okay.
Specifically on Robertson Road, there may be some other parcels or what, what we want to identify are the sections of Robertson Road that the county has any obligation for maintenance or repairs on. And maybe that's something, depending upon the location, or maybe Commissioner North's right and there isn't any. But, but let's make sure. And then, we may want to talk about negotiating that as part of the deal. If it's close enough in proximity to some of these parcels. Okay? There's another one we ought to talk about because it kind of falls under the same river access. And this is a few pages down, page 23 in the packet, ending in 0700. Yeah. This is, you know, the, another one of those situations where we ought to discuss and consider for the public whether or not there's an interest in retaining that. Or what we were talking about with Mills potentially was to create or have some sort of covenant or condition that, that there's gonna be a public access way. Over there, it's probably a little different in the Mills area because they're talking about developing that as, in, in kind of that same theme. This is right behind everybody's house. Their private residences, they're probably what, 10, 12 or more private residences.
There's a bunch.
So, I don't want to cause problems, but maybe a question is, why does the city want that? What would they do with it? I, I wouldn't want them to sell it to private individuals other than perhaps the adjoining property owner. What, what do you guys think about?
I, I agree. I know that's all on the city on the north or the south side right there, but that north side, it's gonna be interesting to see if that gets developed in the future and what happens. And is that all in the river? Just about?
Our parcel, it, it looks like actually there's some. So, this looks like it goes from the center line of the river to the south.
It does.
We ought to figure out who owns the north from the center line of the river to the north. Will you do that as well? Some vacant lots over by, that's the detention center, isn't it?
Yeah.
On Bruce Lane in North Glenn. Did you check, this is page 33 of the packet? 33 through what, 39 or so, 30? Did, did we confirm with the sheriff's department that they don't see a future use for those, those couple lots?
I, I, I'll go back and check. I believe that they didn't have any interest, but all, my memory is not quite the best. There have been a little bit since I, I looked at those particular ones. So, I'll double check and make sure that that's still the case.
Yeah. So, out of all the lots that, that, of the swap, other than where there's those interests with Iris or whatever, this would be the three potential lots that we may want to keep just for future expansion of either the jail parking or, or some other county facility that would be up in that area.
Even storage, because they're always talking about storage.
Storage, maintenance shop.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Because that'd be a good, good spot for maintenance to have an office there.
Looks like these are, it's Salt Creek Heights Block 2, lots 1 through 3. I just think that the proximity, we're, we're gonna be across the street on Bruce Lane for a long, long time. So, the proximity might mean there's some value or compelling interest for the county.
One of the biggest customers for our maintenance is the jail. Might be handy to have a place for storage, a yard built in there for them.
Well, not only that, but the other equipment that they need to store.
Yeah.
That's for emergency response stuff.
Yes, we're gonna have to do something with that, station 7 on those days maybe.
Those look like they're, one's 1.01 acres and two are like nine tenths of an acre. So, it's about three acres in size, which would be enough to, enough square footage to make some use of. So, we need to think about that one.
Yeah.
For sure. I didn't have any others that I had confirmation about or questions about. They're miscellaneous lots, basically in the river, North Casper. I, I do think it's important, Heather, that, that we make it abundantly clear that, you know, there's not gonna be any remedy or recourse of one party to the other for saying, well, we didn't know about this or we, you have to indemnify us or hold us harmless for this issue with this adjacent property owner. So, it's gotta be completely clean for us on that. I have had to work through those issues before in buy-sell deals. Okay. There's, there's another one on North Foster and Bruce Lane intersection, which was probably, well, it's, it's just across the street, I think. Again, it's kind of catty corner to the detention center. Because it's not directly, this is page 49 of the packet. I, I don't think this is in quite the same category as those other three lots.
No, it's, it's mo- smaller in total size, plus it, you know, it's got a road between the two. So,
Right.
I, I think that one's okay.
Commissioners, anything else? Or Heather, there, or any other, do you need any other guidance or direction?
I don't think so at this time. Wish you have question, more questions for me.
Nope. After you hear back from including Mr. Gustafson at ECS and some of these other people, let's, let's get back together and then we can, you know, decide what the next step will be, but.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Do you want to proceed? Are you ready, Lita and you in the corner, to go into the indigent bodies policy?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Coroner, how are you?
Good. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, gentlemen. If you recall, two weeks ago, about, I guess approximately two weeks ago, you all signed off on a resolution allowing the coroner to dispose of the current remains in his office. And we were also asked to draft an MOU between the board and the coroner's office in order for the county to become compliant with the statute regarding unclaimed or indigent human remains. That is what we presented you today. Now, there are a couple changes that were made, that the chair suggested. He suggested, I guess, the ones that are substantive, that the transfer from the budgets occur, or he wanted a date for that. I put in five days from executing this.
Can you reference page?
Oh, sure. It is page 4, under E, as in Edward. Because right now, all of that money is in the coroner's line item budget. And I put in the revised draft within five days of execution of this MOU. However, the coroner suggested.
Wait until the start of the new budget year. You know, it's gonna create chaos if we try and do this right at the end of the, the game here, move things around. I have already, in my next year's budget request, have eliminated that line item out of my budget and for you guys to pick up. And I think it's a good place to start there on 7-1 as opposed to five days from now.
And that's fine. I'm happy to make those corrections and bring those back down before the end of the night here. Does anyone have any questions?
No, but Mr. Coroner, you bring up a good point about, you know, kind of keeping the status quo for the budget, the current budget year, because we've only got a month left, roughly. Month and a month plus. And so, just, just wondering, since you know the system a lot better than I know it, and, and clerk good if, if there are any, any other items. When, when do we usually send into WCCA the request for reimbursement?
We have all that put together ongoing and they usually request it in July. Like, right off the bat in the, in the start of the budget year, we'll turn it over to the BLCC Association and they get going.
Okay. So, for the previous fiscal year?
For the previous fiscal year.
So, that, that part of it will be clean?
Yep. And then, going forward, you know, and it, it's probably outlined in this. I mean, I foresee my office, myself, or at least as long as I'm in, I'm in term, continuing to do everything as far as keeping this stuff put together. And then, basically bringing down the invoices and contracts for whoever you decide to sign off on that. And I, I can keep everything else put together and make sure that remains get to the columbarium or back to family, do all that kind of stuff. The only hinging point is the fact that really I'm not statutorily aligned with making the signature fiscally. So, I'll continue to do all that and I'll, I'll come down with my lead and train, whether it's Michelle or whoever it is that you want on that piece of signing off on the contract and the invoices. And we can just kind of go that way.
Madam Clerk, do you have any clarifications you need on that? Or do you think you've got it squared?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's appropriate to start this with the new budget. I think that's the cleanest way. So, if we could change that in, in the document, that would be great.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fantastic. Let's just plan on that in section E, that, that second sentence, second paragraph. Do we need any clarification? I don't think we do, but either from Michelle or, or Madam Clerk, if, if on the signing of invoices and contracts, or do we just roll with that as per normal?
Mr. Chairman, I would believe that we would just roll with it as normal since I'll put it under a commissioner-controlled account.
Right. Okay. So, the only question I had, one of my suggestions was the coroner making and retaining permanent records of indigent and unclaimed remains. I didn't see that in here. I don't know if, if there was a concern about that one or if it, if it was an oversight or, but I, I do think record keeping, I mean, even if we pay for it, that you're gonna be, I think your office would be the appropriate one to keep and maintain those records.
Incorrect. And we do as part of a case file, no matter what. If they're a coroner's case, I have a regular case file for that record keeping. If they are not, I do it as a non-jurisdictional case file. So, we, we will have record of everything that happens. If they are not, I do it as a non-jurisdictional case file, so we, we will have record of everything that happens as far as that's concerned, other than basically, like I said, that, that fiscal end of it, so.
Lita, do you think that's sufficient for the, the, the record keeping that he has? And I don't know if that's per statute or, uh, that the coroner's office already keeps.
I do, and I do believe that's in your policies and procedures.
Correct.
Mister Chairman, I'd still like to see it spelled out, just because commissions change, coroners change. Hopefully coroner doesn't change at all for a long, long time, but things do happen.
Hopefully eight years.
And so just having the, having this document as the work between the two, uh, the board and the commission, or the coroner, I, I do believe that should potentially be spelled out.
So the, the, the one thing on my, the sentence I, uh, said was retain permanent records, and maybe permanent is a little bit too strong, because permanent perpetual, you know? So, so maybe we take that word out, the coroner shall make and retain records of classification and disposition of all indigent and unclaimed remains. Does, does that sound?
Per state statute. Yep, and, and we do that now, and, and the permanent record on the fiscal side is currently being kept, because we turn all that in, even though it's my signature, and it go, goes through AP that way, so.
Okay, so I think if we change the fiscal year commencement and then, uh, add that modified sentence in, Lita, I think we're good to go.
And I did want to update you real quick on where we're at too, since, uh, this all began. So since we started this, we're sitting on thirty-eight unclaimed, um, sets of remains. Um, we've released a total of fifteen of those. Eighteen for sure will go to the columbarium. Um, in other words, there's no one, no one to take them or what. Um, we have three awaiting release in person and two awaiting shipping for that total of thirty-eight. So out of all of that, uh, it, it continues to just build, but we're, we're, uh, getting stuff back to families quite regularly now. So eighteen total will, will end up going to the county plot.
That's, that's great. Thank you very much for your, and your offices' efforts on that, because that's a pretty remarkable reduction over a short period of time. So thank you. That, um, that's really a, uh, service to the public and, and to the commission, obviously. So, um, I had talked to, do you, you want to go ahead?
No, I'll, I was just going to say, I appreciate you taking this and getting it taken care of, because it's been a, I know it's been an issue for a long time. And, uh, one less thing you're going to have to worry about, one less thing we're going to have to worry about in the future. So I, I just want to express my gratitude toward getting this accomplished, getting this taken care of. Yeah, not a problem. I think we all just want to do what's right, so.
Um, I think I have a columbarium file on one of my fellow commissioners' desks. Can you hold on for just? So as an update on the columbarium, um, the, we've got Commissioner Freel, um, received three bids. The lowest and best appears to be one for thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars. Um, if we move quickly, that one can be acquired. Otherwise, there, um, I believe it said sixty to a hundred and twenty days for bill or, or whatever. Um, that includes freight and setting it on the pad. The pad would be extra. Uh, the city of Casper was going to, um, have it engineered, um, in terms of the, the thickness and, and the spec for the concrete. And Commissioner Freel, before he left town, hadn't heard back from, from the city. Um, there was a question of, um, uh, a fee requested by the city to basically keep track of, of things. And we thought that was unnecessary for a couple of reasons. So, um, we're waiting to hear back from the city on the, uh, fee per remains brought in. Hopefully, we won't, we won't have to worry about that. Um, so I'm hoping at our next meeting, um, and I guess Heather and Michelle, just as a heads up, uh, that, that we can approve, uh, the purchase of, of this. It's about the Windsor forty, forty-eight. Um, I think, I think we've seen this. It's double-sided. Um, Mister Coroner, have, have you seen this?
I have.
It's, nothing's changed since the last debate. So I, I think we're about ready to pull the trigger on that. Um, are there any questions, comments, or concerns about it? Or, because I know we would like to move forward and we've committed to moving forward as quickly as possible on that. I think we're about, about there.
If money's an issue, especially since we're at the end of the year, I mean, I've got money that can be transferred to another line item to cover this if you, if you need, so.
Uh, usually people are asking us for money, so I'm kind of like speechless. Um, well, that, that's great, and, and let's, let's give that a little thought. And maybe you can help, your office can help out with the concrete, for example. But, um, thank you very much for, uh, that offer. We'll, we'll get back to you. The, the clerk, our, our fiscal officer is looking over here for some reason. Do it. She says do it. Um, we typically like to do what she says. Uh, but let's, uh, let's circle back on that one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other issues on this one?
Got everything settled out with the power outage of the day.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I need.
Yep, they, they've sent, uh, the generator people out, fixed everything up, yeah, so.
Great. Okay, thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And actually, I guess you're going to stay there.
I'm here for a little bit, though.
For the next item.
Five minutes.
Yep, and Eileen Hill, our IT Director, purpose is the source code purchase agreement. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mister Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the time. And thank you, Lita, for putting all your work into this.
You're welcome.
I think I'm going to let Ms. Hill start with this one.
Okay, certainly. In the treasurer's office, we have a vendor who is retiring, and he has developed some custom software that allows the office to manage taxes and some other, um, with the tax management system is what we call it. So collection of, um, the taxes and then the tax roll and tax distribution. So upon his retirement, he has agreed to, um, sell his software to the county so that we can maintain it internally and, um, continue to use it. This will allow continuity and customization for the treasurer's office.
Eileen, will your department be the one that, that changes the programming or updates any of that stuff? So it won't go to an outside source, to that it will be all internal?
Correct.
Okay.
Mister Chairman. Eileen, so if we purchase the code, the source, who will be creating those updates if we need any or, or anything like that?
I have a programmer on staff who's very familiar with the business operations in the office, and, and he will be working on that.
Okay.
And you and I discussed, uh, this morning, but just for the other commissioners, um, his, the new person's work, uh, moving forward, um, there won't be any kind of ownership, uh, claim, um, by him, uh, to the source code or to, to the other work, um, that he does associated with this, correct?
That's correct.
And I, I see that, um, his, his company is Systems Consulting Incorporated?
Correct.
And in section four, um, he's got representations and warranties, one of which is, um, having the full power and authority to enter into the agreement and is the sole owner, um, of this, which in IP world is important to confirm. So, um, so that's good. Um, have, have we confirmed, uh, the, the, the payment structure? There are two, still two payments? Yeah, two payments. Um, is he okay with that?
I have not spoken to him about it.
We're, we're hoping.
We're hoping.
Okay, well, let, let us know, but, um, yeah, I, I, um, are there any questions or concerns on this one?
Eileen, one more question real quick. This program that, that the assessor's using is behind firewall where, where there isn't a potential, not saying he'd do it or anything, but with this type, it, it just makes me nervous. There's no potential where they could get, anybody could get to it, keep back doors, do whatever.
That's correct. We won't be connected.
Okay, thank you.
But we will. It's my intention, when we acquire it, to vet it thoroughly, separate from our network system, to just.
Put it in a sandbox and play for a long.
Correct.
Thank you.
Eileen, it says the first payment would be due on June first, and then the second payment upon delivery, successful delivery. Do we know, have a estimated timeframe of what that would be?
September.
Okay.
So I, I didn't see any source code at Walmart last time I was there. How did, how did we arrive at thirty-two thousand dollars?
The thirty-two thousand dollars is, in essence, two years of his, um, subscription, um, for a, 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 a subscription service to his software that we've been paying over the past several years.
Based on your experience, which you have a lot of, um, do you feel that's a reasonable, um, price for the county to pay?
I do. I, um, went out to another vendor, an off-the-shelf vendor, just for comparisons and it's comparable.
Okay, great. Okay, um, I think we'll be fine with this and we'll approve it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you much. Our next item, um, our next appointment is with Anna Kinder, uh, of the Netronka Health Department, um, for an update. It's a two-thirty appointment. I'm not seeing them here yet. Um, I think we could, uh, maybe do commissioner roundtable unless there's an objection. Um, I know we, we have three of us. You guys want, you want to deal with that now? I think we're going to be pretty time crunched, uh, this evening, so, yeah, Commissioner North, thank you.
The committee's been working on the Central Wyoming Shooting Complex, trying to get everything done. The deadline to get that completed and turned in is June third. Uh, we have secured a, an agreement with a property owner, um, for the purchase of that, providing we do get that, so we're not obligated to pay the full amount unless we actually get the, the shooting complex here. So we're moving forward. That's a big step, a really big step to securing that, because we've, uh, it's a substantial amount of property. And that's, that's going to set us aside, um, from a lot of places. So that, that's going to help out quite a bit. And we've, we're starting to come together. Everything's coming together really fairly well as far as that, that entire system, as far as what Netronka County has to offer, uh, overall, as far as different venues, different things that we're looking at, and things that, that are basically going to benefit the entire state, not just Netronka County, if we can get the legislators to support this. So we'll find out. They're going to take all this information. Within about two weeks after they do, they'll start doing interviews and then make a short list. And that short list will be presented to the legislators. So at that time, it'll be time for us to reach out to all our legislators, whether we in this county or other counties and, and see what we can do as far as bringing it to the central part of state.
Uh, thanks for taking the lead on this, Commissioner North, um, and let us know, uh, if and when you need us to start making those calls, um, to, to help out, to be another set of eyes on, um, you know, that, that submittal, the June submittal, if, if that's necessary or needed from, you know, the county's perspective. Um, that, that would be, um, a great thing for our entire community. And I, I know, um, you know, I, I know we all would like to see it, uh, be, see it land here in Netronka County. Um, I, you want to go next? Commissioner Millen, you get to go next.
Um, been involved in a couple of meetings where different projects or potential projects are, uh, coming forward. There, there's, there's some good stuff coming forward. I can't talk about it really a whole lot, but there are some projects, some companies that are looking at Casper, um, things related to, you know, different industries that are, are focusing on Casper, different events that are looking at Casper. And, uh, yeah, it, it looks like the, some of the things that are coming or may come. Casper's got a really good chance of pulling these in, so hopefully we do, um, and we aren't scuttled by some other board or agency or anything like that. No, everything looks good. I don't have anything for the fairgrounds right now. Uh, last time I talked to them, everything's on schedule and on track for the, the, them helping with the CNFR and then also the fair and rodeo. Uh, new fair vendor is coming in. Um, things are going to be a little bit different than last year. It'll be through, uh, QR codes and, and the like, and then people just have it. There will be a whole lot of cash exchanged. That'll help eliminate a lot of, or not a lot of, but it'll help eliminate opportunities for, for audit mistakes or, or the like.
Um, last week, I attended the, um, Wyoming Community, the Wyoming County Commissioners Association, uh, Board of Directors meeting. Um, and, uh, it was hosted by Carbon County. Um, we, um, worked through, um, some of the, some legislative, uh, this kind of, some legislative roundup, looked forward to, you know, some of the, the issues moving forward, um, both legislative and otherwise. We had a NEPA training, um, which hasn't been a big issue for us, um, at least during the short period of time that I've been on the commission. I know it's been, um, a, a huge issue for, um, some of the, some of our, our counties, uh, in other parts of the state, um, having to deal with different forest plans. Um, I did receive a packet of materials and training guides and things like that, and, and I've given them to our, our county attorney so that if and when we do have NEPA issues, um, for example, Marton Ranch, I could see, um, something, um, being within NEPA jurisdiction on that. Uh, we may have some additional resources, but I know we can always reach out to, um, our, uh, other counties. And, and Heather, just, just in the back of your mind, if, if your legal department knows that Micah Christensen with, uh, the WCCA is an absolute expert on, um, basically all things. The WCCA is an absolute expert on on basically all things. You know, federal policy, federal law, environmental law related. You know, that that would be good, a good resource for for you and and your staff. Commissioner Millen, did you have something on on any of that? Okay.
I've been into one with one NEPA thing and that was enough.
Yeah, it's it's so good. We did take a. A short tour up into the Medicine Bill, Medicine Bill Root Forest in the Ryan Park area. And saw some of their efforts largely related to timber and and logging and fuel break. And and pine beetle clearing. So that that was, that was good. The. Tonight, we're going to be moving forward on the contract, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, Heather, but but. For the demolition of the one thirty six West B property, so. You know, I I think we're going to see some action there pretty quick. And then on the parking lot for. Right, right next to the building that the the commissioners and and that the staff, lots of county employees will walk through. That'll start. Pretty soon. I think those are all my updates. I do note that our next. The folks for our next appointment are here. So Anna Kinder of the Nitron County Health Department and and team, please come on up. I wasn't sure which of the team members were going to actually come up because I see quite a few people that are here today, so thank you, but I do. See here at the table with you Brandon Daigle of MOA Architecture and Tim Shank, our owners representative on the building project, so welcome.
Thank you. Well, it's great to see most of you. Finally getting into some good weather.
Is it not great to see?
Well, I mean. Dallas and Steve excluded, sorry. So today, what you have in front of you are two documents. One is the health building request for funding letter. Along with supporting documents that have been provided by the health department and the second is a request for approval. Or notice to proceed for the early site package bids we received last month. This document addresses the construction costs for the early site work and has been included in. The initial letter and all the estimated pricing to date. So the amount for the early site work. Actually bidding it early, we were able to save approximately hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Under the estimate and we're asking that this be approved so we can move forward quickly. Because there is a fair amount of site work that needs to occur before building construction can start. So just a quick overview, MOA Architecture has been working. Pretty diligently with their design team, their cost estimator and Sampson Construction, your construction manager at risk over the past six months. To establish estimated costs for the new health department building through drawing, design and and coordinated efforts. There were originally two cost estimates paired by Cumming Group and Sampson Construction. Those were vetted and in February of twenty twenty four, the anticipated cost. To construct the project described in the schematic design documents was thirty four million five hundred thousand. That included an eight percent design contingency and five percent construction contingency. Since that time, the design development documents have been completed and a new updated. Estimate has been prepared by Sampson Construction. Their current revised pricing is thirty one million five hundred eight thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. That includes all contingencies. The design team and Sampson Construction have reduced the estimated construction cost by approximately two point two million dollars since that early. Schematic design estimate. So we believe it's critical for the project to move forward at this time. Without delay to avoid any higher cost impacts. The team will, however, continue to pursue other ways to save money. As I mentioned, the early site package was let for bids in March twenty four and March twenty twenty four, and the results were successful. Saved nearly a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars over the estimate. Allowing this work to begin now will allow the building construction to start approximately three months. Earlier than initially planned, allowing foundation and structural framing to proceed prior to inclement weather, which should save additional dollars. As construction progresses. So summary of anticipated project costs, which you can see on page two. Of the request for funding letter. The design development construction cost estimate is thirty one million five hundred eight thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. That includes a five percent construction contingency. And we have included two point five percent design contingency of seven hundred eighty seven thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. To cover unanticipated costs as they complete the construction documents in the next six weeks, four weeks? Twenty days? So we don't anticipate anything major there, but we continue to carry that number until the documents are complete and the final estimate's done. There are soft costs included or added to this of seven point two million. Those include professional services. Purchase of furnishings, special equipment, move into the building. And other miscellaneous items. So total project costs are currently thirty nine million. Four hundred ninety six thousand four hundred thirty dollars. Less secured funding of twenty two million five hundred thousand dollars. It's a funding request of sixteen million nine hundred ninety six thousand four hundred thirty dollars. So it's the intent of this letter with the supporting memos that the health department provided to formally request funding. From the Trona County in that amount. And these funds are required to close the gap. And provide the project to move forward. The second document, which I've alluded to. In that is our recommendation to accept the early site work package. Sampson Construction was. Asked to move forward with its early site package, which includes all of the dirt work, underground utilities, et cetera, on the site. They reviewed or received bids and we vetted those and the low bid in the amount of five million three hundred twenty eight thousand five hundred twenty three dollars. For the early site work package is our recommendation for acceptance. That includes, as I mentioned, earthwork, trenching, underground utilities, relocation of. Overhead existing utilities. It's the recommendation of MOA Architecture and your owners representative. To issue a notice to proceed for this portion of the project to Sampson Construction for the attached documents. And language contained in their agreement. And I included in that letter. Two items. From the agreement that allow this to move forward without having part two of their. Construction management agreement signed and three point three point one point two. Allows the construction to commence prior to the guaranteed maximum price amendment. By written agreement of the parties, the written agreement shall set forth a description of the work. To be performed by the construction manager and any insurance and bond requirements for work performed prior to execution of the general maximum price amendment.
Tim, can you tell me what that that number was? What what does that five million include? Again, I'm not seeing, I'm missing it.
It includes primarily all the earthwork on site. Trenching for underground utilities. Installation of underground utilities, gas, water, sewer. Relocation of all the overhead power and data lines that run along the north side of the site. And. Pardon? Oh, and the retaining wall, yeah, that large retaining wall along the east side of the property.
So this is in addition to the thirty nine million?
No, this is included in the thirty nine million. So when we formally bid this, we were able to save about a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars over what was originally estimated. But it is included in the thirty nine million. And the reason to push this forward, as I mentioned, is to to get a jump on, well, several things. Number one is pricing, but number two is. To get out in front of the weather and be able to get the site work done. It's approximately three months worth of work. To do to get this complete and ready for the building to progress. And this should save additional dollars as we'll be able to come out of the ground. By late summer, early fall and beat the cold temperatures where we're going to have to do a lot more protection.
Following up on a couple of things, is the five point three for the early site work package, is that part of the? DD construction cost or is that one of the other line items in the thirty nine million?
It's part of the DD construction cost.
Okay, and then the second, you 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 mentioned retaining wall, or I think Mr. Daigle mentioned retaining wall. So I saw that if we go with standard gray, it'd save us sixty five thousand dollars versus limestone. Yellow. We ought to look at that. I don't, I don't want to do the architect's job and I can't speak for all of us, but I was pretty surprised that that that's that's a lot of dye pigment.
It's a big area.
So, so anyway, Commissioner North, maybe I have another question.
I do. On the soft cost. Why is that included in here? Because I was under the impression that when we got the original estimate on this. That this was a turnkey operation that we walked in when we got it finished. And so I, I'm a little concerned about a seven point two million dollar soft cost on addition to this over and above. What that cost is.
Oh, go ahead, Brandon. So that includes. Sorry, so within the soft cost, that includes your AV and security costs. And your low voltage costs, which are typically provided by the owner on the back end. But those are numbers that are included in that estimate. There's also about a one point five million dollar owner contingency during construction. That's part of that seven point two. So in the event that something comes up beyond the control of the contractor. And or the owner wants to add something at the later stage, that number is included in that one, at a seven point two as well. And then you also have your third party materials testing during construction, all of your furniture fixtures and equipment that would go into the building. Along with the design and moving moving costs are in that number as well.
Your firm's number is in that?
Correct, yep. And the two point two for all of the engineering and the owner's representative and the commissioning agent, all of the. That is the entire project cost along with contingencies and construction escalation costs to the midpoint of the project are incorporated into that.
One other question related to the the design contingency, because I thought that when we signed the contract. With MOA that that was a single cost for the entire thing and there was no additional cost.
That's not my, that's not my money, sir. That is design of the building. So as the design is evolving. Infrastructure and decisions have been being made and that number has come down. That is not design fees. That is consideration of what would be put into the project. And we've carried a design contingency that's gone down through the project that is not engineering or architect design fees.
Good.
Once the drawings are complete and Sampson has finalized their guaranteed maximum price, any monies. Not expended out of that current design contingency go back to you. Or are reduced from the total project cost. It's a, it's a number that we're carrying just to make sure that there if there are any unforeseen or unknown items. At this point, as they complete the documents, that we have some money in there to cover that and not exceed that thirty. Nine million or thirty one million, so.
Okay, I've got one more question because all three of you are aware as well as commission that we had an opportunity for a different location. That was flat with utilities on there. And. I read through your reasoning why we shouldn't pick that particular location. I disagreed with the majority of those. Because of the background that I do have in construction and and design. How much of that would have been reduced from that five point two, three million dollars? As far as if we had a site that would have been. That we could have gone in and started on right away because it was flat with all the utilities and the access already there. Because I know you're talking about things that we have to do, the retaining wall, the kind of stuff. I'm just, I I'd just like to know what the answer is to that.
Yeah, Logan, I don't know if I don't have those qualified. So there's two main things that would go along with that would be the soil. Infill and or haul off those costs associated with hauling that and then the retaining wall. Short of that, we don't know that all of the utility infrastructure would have been met on that other site and we don't know that. There wouldn't have been other improvements to the site that would have been necessary. Without taking the time to explore that, we would have been, we 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 can't answer that in an apples to apples comparison. And in order to explore that, we would have had to pay our civil and other engineers to do their job to redesign portions of that work. And so that's why ultimately, we can give you an answer for those two specific costs.
What what are those? What is the answer for those specific calls, the haul?
I don't have that right in front of me, but we can get those to you.
I'd like to have that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thanks for coming in. Just a couple of questions real quick on my side. So you gave a pretty good. Explanation of design contingency. What's the difference between that and the construction? The five percent construction contingency versus the design contingency? Whoever wants to answer.
Design contingency is specifically held as the documents are completed because there are. Decisions that have to be made as you develop the drawings that could potentially affect certain areas of the design. And those are items that Sampson would not have been aware of when they did this last estimate, so that is protection. To make sure that we've got those covered within the total project cost and anything that's not. Absorbed into the final construction cost out of that contingency. Just goes away, rolls back into your court. Construction contingency. Is used to cover unforeseen things during the building construction phase. We may run into some additional bad soils or. Some changes that need to occur due to requests from the owner. And so those numbers cover those costs typically. We're carrying five percent at this point, but we anticipate that number to drop down to. Two and a half to three percent. Normal contingency expenditures on projects is typically in the range of two to two and a half percent on a national level on average. So we're carrying more than we'll need and we'll drop that eventually once it's all bid out.
So like if there's a problem with the HVAC while we're doing construction that was ordered or whatever, size or load or whatever, then that could be.
Could be.
That'll fit into that construction. Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, I've I've slept since last time I read. Everything with the design and everything. We're over there with the hillside and and the draw. Were we going to need to put any case on spials or anything in there into the foundation?
Right, the the design is currently drilled piers, concrete piers, which we would have on either site. Which allows us to get. Which allows us to get down through our wonderful Casper soils, uh, into bedro, what we consider bedrock, or, or the soils engineer considers bedrock for bearing.
So you'll drive to termination, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioner North, thanks to our friends at Sampson, uh, I do have those answers for you. So the retaining wall cost is eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And the earthwork cost is seven hundred and three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Um, but that earthwork number does include excavation for the crawl space and work around the building that would be part of either site work. So I don't have one that is just specifically the hauling cost, but between the two numbers, you're looking at one point five two five for that amount of work.
I appreciate you guys getting that number to me.
Commissioners, any other questions on either of these two items, uh, that are on for our consideration and approval tonight at our regular meeting? Well, thank you for your efforts, um, Ms. Kinder, you were pretty quiet today. Is there anything you'd like us to know?
They basically have all the answers that you probably needed, so.
Great, and I, I know you're involved on this project too every single day.
Every day.
Probably including Sundays, so, uh, thanks to you, um, for, uh, spearheading the effort, and, and of course to you, Mr. Daigle, and, and you are, are, uh, Mr. Shank, our owner's rep, um, and Sampson, thank you for, uh, coming in today. Um, I don't believe we have anything else, um, for you right now, so have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
You bet. I think we're gonna take a five-minute break. We're a little ahead of schedule. We have some elected officials in the House. Uh, is this what? Okay, great, we'll hang on for another minute or so, unless, yeah, we'll hang on. Hmm? I would like that. So our next appointment is with our elected officers. Um, Jill Keister, our clerk of district court, Jim Whips, our coroner, Tracy Good, our clerk, Tammy Salisbury, our assessor. Um, we're, we know that, uh, our sheriff is out of town, I believe. Um, he won't make it today. And I believe either our treasurer, Tom Doyle, or someone from his office is on the way. But yeah, let's go ahead and, um, get started. So welcome.
It's work. There we go. Good afternoon. Tammy Salisbury, uh, assessor for Neptuna County. This is our quarterly meeting, uh, update. Uh, basically, we're, for my department, we are in the third week of reviews for appeals. Um, that's been going pretty well, pretty quiet, actually. And, uh, we, uh, at this point only have two formal appeals. And that's basically it.
Tammy, I've had a lot of calls from people on the mountain. Um, as far as their property values going up. Is there? Can you fill us in a little bit on that as far as what's going on or anything else? Just so we have an answer.
Sure.
I mean, I'm pointing to Malte.
The sales are still, uh, quite high and very random. So there's no rhyme or reason to it. Uh, smaller piece sells for a hundred thousand, a large piece sells for a hundred thousand. Trying to get a price per acre is still pretty hard. We do have an adjustment that we are putting on parcels that do not have any utilities or a main road. And what I mean by that is, uh, uh, whether it's paved or not paved, but, uh, we go in there and plow it so that it's not just those little two tracks, you know? So we're not counting that as a real road.
Okay, so some of the, some of the areas that we've discussed in the past, I mean, I'm not saying they're ones that are, that are wrong, but, um, some of those areas that have limited access or aren't even sure if they have a legal ask, access to those locations, those are the ones you're talking about.
Correct.
Okay.
Those, those attributes have been left on there. And if they weren't on there before, we're catching them as they come in.
Okay, all right. Well, that, that helps.
Yep. Any other questions for me?
The expansion of the property tax refund program, my recollection is that there's a somewhat narrow window for people to, um, participate in that. They have to pay their property taxes first to then get a refund. What, am, am I, um, I, I was, I was reading an article and it, and I can't remember what the deadline is for people to apply for that.
I believe it's June third. I would have to double check the application, but we do, uh, have those, um, I believe they are online and, uh, through the Department of Revenue and then, um, I'm not sure about the treasurer, uh, online stuff, but, uh, we do have the applications in our offices and are passing those out.
So you're, it sounds like you're pretty sure that it's on our website. I'd, I'd like to know for sure.
I will double check that. I believe that it is, but I'm, I'm positive it is.
And then, uh, and, and that's the only one that I think goes into, is in effect currently. I think the others, um, go into effect, um, next year at some later point. We, we have some time, but what, what is the demand? Um, what have you seen both, both last year and this year for, um, people participating in that property tax refund program?
I believe last year we pushed it pretty hard in our office. Um, and everyone was very thankful, especially the people that did not know about it. Um, and I believe we have just as many, if not more, this year that are applying for that. Um, I do think with the four percent cap, uh, on primary residential property has helped. Um, and next year that will also include the land, which I think will help. Um, I'm not sure if that refund program will continue on past this year. I don't know.
No, the, the four percent though, um, I don't think that one's in effect yet.
Not on the land.
Just.
Just on the, the structure, the home.
Okay.
And, excuse me.
Yeah.
Um, so right along with that, not just the refund, but we also have the, uh, those that are sixty-five years of age and older also have that.
That will go into effect in twenty twenty-five. And according to the Department of Revenue, we should see the applications, uh, be, uh, accessible starting in September of this year for that.
Okay.
As far as detail, um, about it, what it, what that application is going to look like, I don't know yet. I haven't, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Is there any discretion for you and your office, um, to go past June third? If someone comes in on June fifth or June eighth and they clearly apply, they, they clearly qualify. Um, can you or DOR, um, grant them relief?
You know, tha- that I don't know. Um, we try to, to stick to the deadlines. Um, of course, that, that's the program that's through the Department of Revenue. Um, so I don't know if, if they go by, um, for most of our stuff, it's by the date it was mailed. I, I would have to check in with Ken or Brenda on that, uh, if they would allow, uh, leniency on being late.
I mean, basically people have five weeks, um, if they haven't participated in the program before, uh, to figure out their tax situation, figure out if they can apply, uh, pay it, figure out if they can apply for this program if they know about it. So, um, I would encourage you and us as a county to do everything we can to, um, you know, let people know about that program and, and, and it wouldn't surprise me if you did have a couple of people trickle in after June third. And so you might want to know the answer from.
Yeah, and we have had even people come into the office. Um, I've dealt with them myself mostly. A handful that need help, uh, reading that application and, uh, reading their ten forty, uh, of what, where it needs to go on that application as far as the amounts or their social security benefits, uh, versus the ten forty. I don't mind helping them if I have the time to do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Miller.
Uh, kinda going off topic a little bit for that. Uh, based off of prior experience and whatnot, looking at, I mean, assessments have been out, people have had a chance to take a look at them and whatnot. How, what kind of read or what kind of feeling are you getting on appeals? Heavy or normal? Normal, they're just kinda trickling in right now or you're not gonna?
Not on wood, they are, um, light.
Okay.
Um, as far as the reviews go, um, I have probably close to four fifty. Um, and half of that is, uh, address changes or, uh, per, business personal properties that have closed. Just where we have to zero out the amount on those. So, um, as far as reviews go, from this time last year to now, very light. And I've, I literally only have right now two formal appeals.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see where that ends up. Um, thank you for your offices continuing to work with people, um, when they come in to see you. Um, I'm looking at our website, I've been looking at our website. Um, on your page, under important dates, I don't see the refund.
Is, is it not there? I thought they put it on there. I can get that on there.
I don't see it on our general news, uh, you know, kind of our, our homepage news. And when you click to the link on the property refund, um, tab, um, it takes you to the DOR's website. And property tax refund program, you click on that. And, you know, there are additional clicks, but.
No paperwork is popping up in there.
I don't see June third anywhere.
Okay. It's either the third or the fifth, and I, I would have to look.
Yeah, and, and, and you, you get my point.
Yep, I will find out.
And I know Ms. Hill is in the room. Um, I know she'd be willing to work with you to, uh, implement some additional or notices period, um, on our, our county website. I think that, that can't hurt and it's easy. So, okay, thank you. Anything else for the assessor?
No, the, the date for, uh, Friday, maybe seventeenth is on there on our front page for, for the deadlines approaching. But yeah.
Okay, I'll find one for the, uh, refund program as well, or tax refund program.
Great.
Get it on there. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coroner, good afternoon again.
Welcome again, yes. Okay, so I'm just gonna give you some quick updates on, on maybe some stats that, um, show what's going on in our county and especially in our city right now, um, in relation to my office. Um, this has been a different kind of year and it, it kinda started last fall. Um, but case count is going way up. Um, the amount of unnatural death, um, that I'm dealing with is, is going up. Overdoses right now, overdose deaths, um, primarily with illicit drugs is, is going through the roof. Suicides, we're on pace for, uh, setting yet again another record year in this county. Um, and unclaimed bodies is, is gone up significantly as, as we've already talked about and, and looked at that. Um, right now I'm sitting on for the fiscal year of, uh, since last July, um, twenty-four. You know, I'm still in process of a couple and we still got about another month and a half. So we could be looking at thirty unclaimed bodies, which would be about twice as many as we've had in the past. But good news is, is we're handling all that. Um, heavily involved in prevention efforts to try and get into some of these, into the weeds with, uh, suicide and overdoses. Um, working with the drug task force and, and the suicide prevention task force and some of those things to, to try and get a handle on some of this. But, um, bottom line, it feels like it's gonna be a crazy year, so.
Mr. Chairman. I know you're asked this about every year on this portion, um, as far as unclaimed. But we've got to the press here. Why are we, why are our numbers up? But why do we have so many unclaimed?
Um, primarily it's, we're just seeing a lot of deaths in that arena right now where, um, you have family estrangement, um, or simply family that can't come up with the money to bury their loved one, take care, take care of that. And the person themselves, um, doesn't have that money. Um, we're looking at, uh, a lot of the poorer population, unfortunately, is what's going on, so.
Is it part of the, what? We're seeing as far as transient population or anything like that, it's?
To an extent. So, you know, just to give you an idea, a lot of this, um, on my side of the house is coming from, um, low income, heavy drug alcohol abuse type of deals, you know, not a pop to pissing kind of thing. And from the other side, coming from the funeral homes, um, we're just getting a lot where, again, um, people are dying, whether in nursing homes, uh, hospice, that kind of stuff. And have been estranged from family for sometimes decades and, and nobody willing to take, take responsibility for them, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Coroner, thanks for, um, your engagement with the school district recently, um, in regard to, uh, youth suicide. Um, I personally would say keep up the effort and the pressure.
We are, we're trying. Um, unfortunately, it took, took an elected standing up and calling them out to get anybody to open their eyes, but.
We, we, um, we, uh, had the Bobby Mayer incident, um, tragedy. Um, we have had a few discussions with the, um, City of Casper folks, um, Central Wyman Counseling Center folks, um, the Health Department folks about, um, some of the efforts the county can be engaged in. Um, not just with respect to suicide, but kind of the culture of violence, if you will, um, especially as it impacts the youth. And some of that seems, you know, way beyond our pay grade or control. I don't, we don't own Facebook and Instagram and, and, and that. But are there things that you think that we as commissioners or we as the county can be doing? Um, whether it's, you know, on the suicide issue or kind of the, the, the bigger issue, the, the, the culture issue for youth? Um, just like your opinions on that, since I know you're, you've been spending time thinking about it.
Yeah, and, you know, there's, there's two different deals here. We, one is gonna be with the school district itself. Um, the other one is, you know, honestly with parenting and, um, doing something for our latchkey kind of kids, um, that are kinda running amok out there. Um, I'm sorry. Suicide is, uh, the end result of, of a very much bigger issue, especially when you're, you're looking at the school district and what have you, when you talk about bullying. Um, sexual identity, I mean, all, all the different problems that are facing our youth and the fact that we don't have education programs in place in our school district to address all of those issues and, and teach our kids, uh, resiliency and coping skills. Um, that, that seems to have been lost, that, that whole education piece on, on teaching our kids how to handle life. Um, and so that's, that's what we're really going after, you know? Like I said, suicide is just kind of the, the end number of all that. But it's the bigger issue of, of all these other things, you know? Um, violence, bullying, um, you name it, everything, everything that's going on. And since the school district has our kids for the majority of their day, you know? We have to somehow shake them loose and, and get them to do more than what they're doing. And again, also on, on the parenting side, if there, there's some sort of campaigns we can run some way, somehow. Um, you know, to get parents more involved. You know, to get parents more involved with some of these children. And and get back to the art of actually parenting our our kids would be nice too, so.
Do you think that the county commission ought to be also engaged with the school district um to be sitting next to you, for example, at?
Absolutely, absolutely, I, you know, I the more we can show from the top down, you know, that the leaders of the community are serious about this, I I think the more they'll be engaged. I met with the uh school superintendent um right after that little deal with the school board. Um and several school board members as well. In the end, you know, it's like, well, we think we're doing enough and we're not gonna do anymore is what it comes down to. Now we're back to going right back at it from the start, push, push, push and and trying to get some, some other programs in there, so.
Well, please let me know what I can do and if you want me to go to a meeting.
Absolutely.
With all of them or with with one or two of them, you know, I'd be happy to make time for that.
Sure.
Thank you, um yeah, extend the same uh request if you need help or whatever. Talk to the superintendent quarterly at least on my part, so if if you need whatever go to meetings on this, this, it's pretty important topic. And and problem with our community. The, that term you used just a second ago, latchkey, what, what do you mean by that?
Well, more and more, we get in the situation where we have two parents at work, full-time careers or single parents. Full-time careers and our kids go from school to home and don't see a lot of times those parents till late at night and there's not, you know, there there's this big gap where they're, they're just out running free and in doing things that the kid shouldn't be doing. You know, it's, they have school and then sometimes nothing.
Right, I I I guess seventy eighties kids, we were all free range kids. Seem like, I I guess I don't understand the difference. I see a difference, but I don't understand where that difference is coming from, I guess.
But when we were, when we were kids, you know, even though, you know, you went out and in the morning and didn't come back till the streetlights are on, type of situation, we still had at least in my situation, you know, very strict rules and um oversight from my parents on what you could and could not do when you're out of the house.
And your friends' parents.
Yeah, and and follow up on that and and somehow we're losing some of that.
But yeah, no, don't hesitate to call any of us or or whatever, full support. If you need to go to any meetings or have.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll make it quick since we will all be spending a lot of time together during the budget season. Um basically, all I have right now is election season is getting into full swing. Um as you know, I sent out flyers to the registered voters in Nitrana County, so we've been been getting a lot of good feedback and response um from that. Also, um I had an employee in a key position in my office leave um our employment, so that has really kinda caused a uh commotion in my office, but as usual, my staff stepping up and it's all hands on deck, so I'm sure we'll get through it without too many issues. And um the other thing I might add is absentee voting will start July twenty-third, however, the timeline to send them out was reduced from forty-five days to twenty-eight days. And we have noticed in my office that mail now is being routed to Denver. It's taking five days for a piece of mail that is mailed from Casper to get back to us. So if you do that twice, to and from, that's ten days, so that's cutting, you know, absentee ballot time down to about eighteen days, which in my mind is um quite concerning, so I guess we'll just keep, you know, pounding that in people's head that there's that issue that we're dealing with, but other than that, that's about basically what I have unless you have any questions.
Um filing for elected office opens when?
May sixteenth through May thirty-first.
Any other questions or barriers for the clerks? Attention today?
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thanks. Good afternoon, Mr. Treasurer.
Uh huh, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have a lot right now, I, revenues are down. And I'm trying to well, I'm working on right now getting distribution done for May. And I also have uh ad valorem for distribution done for April. I also have ad valorem for uh May and I'd like to get that distributed. Then I could get that information to you guys. Uh I would assume it would present a better picture than what we're looking at right now. But um we're very busy right now because of the May tenth due date. And then, of course, motor vehicle is is busy every month, so. But I I've got uh a group of good employees and uh we're, we're hanging in there.
Good, um yeah, our budget session starts the twenty-first or twenty-second?
Oh, I'm excited.
Yeah, we we are too. Clerk Good is really excited.
Yeah, I bet.
To to the extent you get the ad valorem in and the distribution for April done. Um that would be helpful, that would give us a little more accurate information on where we, where we stand, um a little more current, I should say, information. Go ahead, Commissioner North.
Tom, um you say our revenues are down right now, how much are they down? Do you have a percentage or?
Uh no, I didn't, I didn't do that, uh but I I I'll get that.
Okay.
I I, like I say, I'd like to get uh April in there and with uh, there was quite a bit of ad valorem, so that should help things somewhat.
Hope so.
But yeah, I'll I'll get a percentage in.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Uh Tom, one of the things that um we discussed earlier today at our, our work session um was the Health Department um building and the 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 price for that is gonna be right at thirty-nine million. Uh we have twenty-two point five um uh basically raised, and so we're just under seventeen million for um I guess the need uh to to make up like the gap, um and I know the Health Department people. Um and uh Ashley was sustainable strategies, strategies. I I wish it were sustainable solutions, but it's strategies. Um it, they're, they're continuing to work on other funding sources, I know that's a work in progress, but um one of the things you and I talked about before, um and I've talked to our clerk about before, is taking basically six million dollars from the uh one cent um capital reserve uh fund and um uh applying that to the construction uh that by my estimate would leave um uh roughly five to six, depending upon the month and the time of the month, left in that account and then for uh the additional eleven, basically ten to eleven million to take that from interest uh from the hospital sale funds over the course of the next couple of years. Does that sound like a feasible plan from the treasurer's perspective?
Um yeah, it does, it it sounds like we don't really have a choice. I will check with the the auditors, make sure we're good uh what we're doing, I I'm sure it is. And then as far as uh taking it from the hospital funds, I just wanna be careful there, I wanna keep money in there um for situations like this. And uh right now, things are are doing well investment wise, so yeah, I I I think i- it's a good thing or it's an okay thing.
And and we wouldn't, just for everybody's clarification, we wouldn't be touching the principal uh of those hospital cell funds, and I know Nick with your office was gonna look at the interest that's already been accrued and earned on those hospital sale funds uh since the date of the sale from the other investment. Um the investments that it's, it's been in, um I I haven't seen the number from him yet, but um I I I think in in up to this point, it's just been added back into principle, which is fine. Um but but I uh hold, I think, pretty dearly personally, I think the commission does too, the principal uh from those hospital sale funds on, that that's a a heck of a good rainy day fund, um and so, yeah, we'd just be talking about the principal uh from that for the next um two to three years, depending upon interest uh uh from those different bonds and the other, the other investments we have.
Okay, yeah, um that, that's a an excellent fund to have, and like I said, right now, it's, it's doing well. And we can pull from it, I just want to uh be very careful and make sure we've always got something in there and and more than a little bit, so.
Tom, um and I've talked to Tracy a little bit about this too, as far as the one cent stuff goes. How much of that has already been allocated that we've got in there and what? You know, I mean, because we go through every year, you know, four years and we allocate that distribution to different things.
That's not, but Mr. Chairman, that's not in the one cent reserve, so let me, I'll get that for you real quick on what we approved for this current fiscal.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's it's the speed of government.
Well, the clerk is looking uh for that, are there any other questions for our treasurer?
I'm good.
I I think you're good, are you gonna stick around for a minute or two just in case? Okay, um and then I think, uh are we, are we down to our district court clerk?
To, to what?
To our district court clerk.
Oh, who's she?
I don't know, uh best, best for last.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Well, I had to say that or I'd get in trouble. I'd get thrown in.
I hear ya.
Thank you, sir.
I'll get out of the way.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh the approved projects for one cent reserve for twenty-three, twenty-four is seven point nine million.
And what did he say, we were setting that?
We're over eleven, as the last number that I.
Okay, so basically, we got three, Megan, that's not.
Some of these will um have to carry forward to this new fiscal, such as some gravel pits and whatnot. For Ro- Road and Bridge, if I, excuse me, if I understand Mike Hagler correctly and talking about his budget. But that includes the water line, eight hundred and fifty thousand for the water line, it includes the lodge on the mountain. Bear trap shelters, so there's, there's quite a few projects in that figure, the Health Department, money two point two for the Health Department, so.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um things in the district court update are um very busy, but very good. Chief Justice Fox last week signed the order um that e-filing will be mandatory starting um July first with a ninety-day implementation date of October first. So we are gearing up for that. Uh you may recall, we've been live on our e-filing since uh twelve, twelve of twenty-two. But right now, we are getting eighty percent paper filings and probably twenty percent e-filing, so we are in a world of that right now, um and it's very cumbersome, so this should help uh when this goes mandatory. Um and I will be working with Eileen with I T and getting some um messaging on the web about that, some links and some helpful tips for attorneys and the public on e-filing documents and how they could view them. Any questions on that at all? Um with that being said, we are also working with the Supreme Court on the data governance policy. Uh because now the rule and the statute say the record is electronic, that's the official record, so we're working through all of those um things we used to do traditionally and how they're going to work um in the electronic world. So I will continue to keep you updated on that. Some exciting news, I went to the national conference in February, I was directed to the board and I got on a couple of calls. Um I'm the president of the association right now for all the clerks of district courts. Um they had a team of trainers that were looking for a rural state for doing training. So I put in a request for Wyoming, um several other states put a request in as well and we were chosen as the site. So in August, we will be receiving this training and it will be of no cost. So they will be training on um case flow, workflow, operations management, budget and fiscal management, accountability, court performance, ethics, public trust, so it will be a really great thing, so. Anyways, that is my update, if you have any questions for me.
Is the, is that training been for all of your clerks?
Yes, it will be for the, all of the clerks in the entire state.
Okay, and um circuit court, district court?
Just district.
Just district. Okay, is circuit court a little jealous?
I'm not certain about that, but.
Sounds like a good program.
It's gonna be really great, yes. They're really, I think they're geared toward district, this particular training, so.
Has the navigator program kicked off yet?
It has, uh as of the first of April.
How's that going?
I think it's going well. We, we have several requests and calls, inquiries on it, so we're keeping track also on that to try to help with data.
And I I know the the navigator program manager person, whose name escapes me.
Lisa?
Yeah, is gonna come or at least report back to us at some interval, so.
Yeah, it's definitely a need for the um pro se litigants.
Good. Okay, well, good luck with the e-filing.
Thank you.
Um anything else for our clerk?
We would just like to thank you for getting us on your schedule, this has been a result of all the elected officials wanting to give each quarter an update to the board on what our departments are doing, so thank you.
Good.
I just wanna say I appreciate you guys all coming in, all the elects coming in and giving us an update, cuz that really giving us an update, because that really helps out. And I hope you all know that if you need anything from us individually, not to hesitate, reach out in between these meetings and everything else, because we have to work together as a team. And I truly believe that, and that's the only way we can do it, is through communicating all the time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is with Danielle Crucheck, HR, for an update. We're a little ahead of schedule. If y'all are good, I think we just keep going. Welcome.
Commissioners, Chairman, I'm here on behalf of the elected officials, the department heads, and yourselves. We've been working hard on salaries and looking at the market and doing another salary study update. I guess we're here to stress the importance of continuing to move forward with the county's wages. We've got to keep providing the core required services to the public with the best customer service. When we did the market study in 2022, the goal was to get to the state's midpoint. The county was consistently in the tenth, the tenth bottom percentile. In 2022, with the budget given and the strategy to keep the formulas fair, an employee had to be over twenty years of service in order to go over the midpoint range. With the market inflation over the past two years, it's been significant. Last year, with giving the two percent cost of living adjustment across the board and the two percent step increase, that helped considerably not let Natrona County fall even further behind. If we would not have given those, we would have been, the budget that I'm going to give you today would have been doubled. I just want to give you a quick example of how far behind we are. Currently, the county's starting wage for a clerk position, this is an entry level position, is seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents per hour. The statewide survey average minimum, and this is the minimum for the statewide average, is eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents per hour. So we're a whole dollar behind. We want to move forward and be a preferred employer. Turnover in 2023 was seventeen percent. In 2022, turnover was twenty-two percent. I do think that the decline and decrease in turnover was due to the salary and the market study and the adjustments. We want to be able to hire qualified, trainable candidates that will make this their career spot. We need to retain strong talent that we've put the work into training. I think the elected officials will ditto that remark and say, we put in the training, we put in the work, and then employees will leave for fifty cents more per hour. We've got to be competitive. In the past, with salaries and updates and market adjustments, it's been inconsistent. So myself and the elected officials, we've all met, and I've met with each one of you, to come to a consensus on a solid compensation strategy moving forward that will show Natrona County employees appreciation for their dedication to the county and incentivize them to stay and continue their career path. The state of Wyoming Salary Survey was distributed in March. We took the average minimum salary range of each position and then added one and a half percent increase between fourteen steps, meaning for every year of service, up to fourteen years, the employee would be able to look forward to a one and a half percent increase, whereas in the past, they would not. Once they hit year fourteen, they would be redlined unless there was a cost of living adjustment. In order to keep this progress going, we'll be creating a committee of stakeholders called the HR Steering Committee. The purpose of the committee is to keep the county consistent by establishing a set of guidelines for determining wage increases and ensure we're all using the same criteria. The committee will look at all job descriptions and make updates and recommendations as a whole. It will be a group effort. We'll look at the compensation, make recommendations based on the market. We'll also look at certifications. We want to be competitive in the market, but we also want to be fair and fiscally responsible with the county's funds. And we want to be fair and consistent across the boards of the county as well. Couple more statistics to give you. With the turnover rate of seventeen percent, according to SHRM, the Society of Human Resource Management, the minimum cost percentage of turnover is forty percent of an employee's salary. So if you take seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents, that's our lowest paid employee full-time clerk entry wage, that would be fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. If you take that times our seventeen percent of our workforce, that would be forty-nine employees, that's seven hundred and six, nine hundred, twenty-three dollars. So last year, with just that entry wage, if all of our employees were making that entry wage, we lost seven hundred and six, nine hundred, twenty-three dollars in turnover. With that being said, not all of our employees were making that smaller wage. Many of our employees were making higher wages, some of them retired. That's going to happen, understandable. But that's a lot of money in turnover. I promised to bring forward some figures after meeting with a couple of the commissioners yesterday separately. We are missing, in these figures, we're missing the department heads, the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office has his own step increase and his own step in grades that he's already included in his budget. So we're missing the department heads, the fair, the ag, and the library. Otherwise, all the other departments are included, the assessor, the clerk, the clerk of district court, the coroner, HR, IT, legal, maintenance, parks, road and bridge, and the treasurer. And if we brought employees up to market according to the scales that we created off of the statewide salary survey, plus gave them a one and a half percent step increase at their anniversary date, we would be at five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, I can say that it will be a little less than five hundred and thirty, because it depends on your anniversary date. So if you've got a higher paying position and you don't get your one and a half percent until April, May, June, I mean, we've got, how many, seven, eight months where they didn't receive that one and a half percent. So we're looking at probably a maximum of five hundred, thirty thousand dollars. Is there anything you guys would like to say, or add? Come up.
Talk about, if you would explain in your calculations what you did with the positions that are, we're having a hard time filling.
So we've got a couple of positions that we're having a difficult time filling, specifically the equipment operators at Road and Bridge. So what we did was, we looked at the market, we took what the state's salary minimum was, and then we looked everywhere else and where they're hiring and what they're hiring in at, and we added ten percent onto those wages to try to bring it up to what other competitors are starting their CDL drivers out at.
Thank you. Are there questions for Danielle? One question I had, the committee, the HR.
Steering committee.
Steering committee. Who would that be comprised of?
Well, I think the elected officials, department heads, and we would love to have a commissioner liaison as well.
Seems like a lot of people. Maybe not all of the elected officials, maybe not all of the department heads, and maybe those would rotate every couple of years, so that, you know, if this elected official's on there for these two years, then bring someone else in, and I think that might help with their, you know, just institutional knowledge. Elected officials do come and go, I hear, and department heads too. So the more people over time that can be part of that, I think the more buy-in there's going to be and the fair it's going to be overall, which I know is one of the objectives that we've talked about and that you've mentioned today. So I don't know what that magic number is, but I look forward to the commission working with you and this committee, trying to set up kind of the parameters. It sounds like a good scope of work for them to do. It sounds appropriate. Some of it's more on the policy side and some of it's more on the, this is going to impact people's, you know, wallets and, you know, the bottom dollars. So I like that. There's always part of, well, all the department heads and elects have to work through, you know, budget issues every year anyhow, and so I think they'd be keen to be involved in this and invested in it too. So thank you. I think this is a good idea. What is the plan for, well, let's see, what is the plan for department heads? I know that's going to require some initial conversation, I think, with the commission. That'll, I assume, add to the number. Did you want to just meet with the commission in, you know, we could meet at our next meeting or we can meet kind of on a individual or a, you know, one-on-two basis, as you've kind of done in kind of the prep work for this meeting today?
Yeah, I think I'll go ahead and send the commission a memo of prep work, and then you guys can decide if we need to have this on an official meeting and how we want to add in the department heads. Also, I know the elected officials went ahead and added in a two percent increase in their budget request under their salary line item. So Tracy and I will have to do some legwork on the backside to take that back out and then put in what these numbers are. The good news is, is that number's already there and is already budgeted. And I think the sheriff has already added in his step increases as well. One other thing, we were going to bring Tom up, and he was going to give the commission some ideas of where this money could also come from and how to sustain it.
Good. Or you can bring the microphone back to him if you'd like.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Do you want me just to bring this back to you? Here, stay there. You're okay.
Okay, what are we looking at as far as what we need? Okay, I, based on what Nick just brought me, and the interest earned on investments, I think we're good. Plus, we're also, we're down in property tax revenues, but we're up in the interest from that. And I don't remember what else I was looking at. But I think we're good. I think we can cover it. And I'll put together something and make sure that we're good.
So, Tom, what, where does that interest on investments show up on our balance sheet? Or what account is that? And maybe our clerk knows off the top of her head. So where, what item is that? And I see Nick is here today too.
Okay.
And Tom, if you have it, great. And Commissioner Millen mentioned there are a couple of different items, a couple of different line items, so if you want to get back to us, you can, but in an email or something.
Okay, well, the biggest thing is the interest off the hospital funds. That's about one point five million so far this year. And compared to about five hundred thousand last year at this time, so.
And by this year, you mean this fiscal year?
This fiscal year, yes.
Okay. Good, yes, Nick.
Also, the ad valorem is, the director's distribution is way up. As well as the pair of mutual money is way up, a lot higher than last year that I included on the sheet for you to review. So you have a copy of this that I just sent you last week. That showed you the increases in pair mutual and also the increase in the director's distribution from the state.
Good.
Which are wealth general fund monies.
Okay. Any questions for the group?
As well as interest is way up also in the FIB treasure general bank account due to those six months that we received that higher interest rate. That's over a million dollars as of March, compared to like, I don't know, less than two hundred thousand or less the year before.
Good. See, it's not all doom and gloom, clerk.
Well, my personal bank account isn't like.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Commissioner Millen, thank you.
So Danielle, just to make sure everybody's understanding, we're looking at a market increase to get everybody to continue fine tuning what we, and continue what we were doing originally.
Correct.
And then on top of that, would be a one point five annual, once their anniversary date comes up, then they get a one point five?
That's correct. Now, that's dependent on where they're at in the market. So we do have a couple of employees off of the last salary study and the way that the jobs are sitting and the market's sitting, that will not receive a market adjustment because they're already within market.
Within or above market?
Correct. Yeah.
That happened last time too, and it's just how it happens.
Yeah, and based on your years of service as well. But you know, like I said, if we can find a way to reduce turnover, I mean, the goal, stellar turnover's ten percent, if we could reduce seven percent, there's our increases right there, there's our five hundred thousand dollars.
Great. Whatever we can do to help out.
I would just echo what Danielle said and all the hard work she has done on this. This will be a very great thing for us to keep our employees and grow our employees and make the county a great employer. Thank you.
We've been talking about stepping grade and whatever for a long time now, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're ahead of schedule. It's a nice place to be. Heather, are you ready for a legal update?
I am.
Go ahead.
So with respect to the agenda this evening, I know we talked about a couple of the items that are on there. I just wanted to bring up the general services contract with Rocky Mountain Power. This is to provide service to the health department site. I included a memo in there that describes the two options that are available. You have to choose one of the options. It's either a rebate back or a credit back. And I think if you have any questions about those, I'll try to answer it, but I would just recommend that you take the credit back, because we don't, you know, anticipate any additional people tying on to the service or connecting to the service.
Heather, on that, did you? Heather, on that, did, did you run that by our owner's rep? Or is there, or, or should we, just to see if anyone will tie on to it? I, I think it's very unlikely, but if, if Life Steps Campus is developed further, if this parcel that the county now owns, I, I know that there's some building limitations on it, but, but conceivably other things could be, I guess, possibly located on it. So, you know, the, the rebate isn't that much money. It's like a $6,000 total deal and only like a 250 or 350 dollar rebate, as I recall.
I think, well, I think it'll be 20% of what the customer paid. So I, I think a max maybe a 20% of that 6,500.
Then I, I must have, I must have misread that.
The, the credits, the contract administration credit, that's, that's 250 dollars. Additional customers have to connect to the improvements within 60 months of the, of the time that the company is ready to provide service.
Well, I guess I, I, I'm comfortable enough with just getting the credit back and not worrying about people signing on. All right, so, so we'll head that direction tonight?
Okay, thank you. Let's see, oh, I guess with respect to the parking lot project, you do have the notice of award on there and, and the contract, which the contractor has approved. So those are, those are together, I don't know that the, that's entirely clear from the agenda, but the contract is on there as well. And.
You have a question on that? My understanding is that the project would occur basically this summer and I think the goal is to have the contractor complete it by August 1st.
That's my understanding as well.
So, um, has there been any discussion or is there any plan with our parking department that we don't actually have with, with what folks are supposed to do or how employees? I know that's primarily an employee entrance, so I assume they can come in on the, the entrance on the other side on be the southwest corner of the building.
So I, I don't know what the, the temporary provisional plan is for parking for the folks that park there regularly. I mean, I think we certainly can park in the regular parking lot, I, I don't know if there's any other options. So I can talk to the parking lot lady.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to upset too many people if I park in quote their spot. So, okay, well, we'll, we'll start walking to work. Take the subway, all right, go ahead.
And I think those are all the items that I've placed out, oh, except for the additional service agreement for the Casper Mountain Trails Center. We had discussed that, I think, at the previous work session. Just removing the, the fireplace from the, from the agreement with the architect. And I believe those are the only items I've placed on the agenda. If you have any questions about these or anything else, I'll, I can do my best to try to answer them.
Any other questions for legal on tonight's agenda or just in general?
Mr. Chairman, no. I did request legal to take a look at the roadway with easements and whatnot into the county coroner's office so that we could evaluate our options there, just so you know, Jim.
Yeah, that's, that's been into Evansville, but they don't maintain or repair it. They probably would be, I, I don't know, maybe they'd be interested in, in some sort of improvement district, which is kind of what we've said to people in the past. Well, when we look into it, we, we might try to engage with Evansville too. I don't know about their funding availability, but from a development perspective, that, that could help them out. Okay. Well, Heather, there's a whole list of items I know you're working on, but I don't think we need to. I, I think I'm pretty much up to speed on, on a lot of them, so we'll just follow up later. Anything else for legal? We are, I think everybody in this room knows it, but should know that we are moving to a five o'clock start time for our county commissioner regular meetings. But we're gonna be in executive session from 5:00 PM to 5:30 PM. My intent, I think our intent, is to deal with the executive session items first that, that involve staff and sometimes we have department heads that need to be there and they don't necessarily need to stick around for an entire meeting that might be three hours or two and a half hours. And then go into executive session, so I would like to prioritize those executive sessions to accommodate staff first and then as, as necessary, we'll have executive session continue or additional executive session after the conclusion of the commissioner comments section of, of the meeting. We won't, if, if, for example, we don't have much or 30 minutes of executive session, we won't start the rest of the meeting, for example, with the pledge before 5:30 so that the public still can, can show up at 5:30 and not, not miss out on any hot takes or, you know, big, big issues, big important county business, so. I think that is about it and we, I think, have our roundtable done. So golly, unless I'm forgetting something and nobody's looking at me like I am, I think we'll adjourn our work session and then convene at 5 o'clock. So thank you, everybody.